Good evening. Tonight is Monday, January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty. It's six P M. at Winterup High School. This meeting is recorded live by W C A T. Ms. Howard, you please call the roll.
Yes. Mr. Perrin?
Yep.
Mr. Fabiano?
Yep.
Mr. Martucci?
Yep.
Ms. Powell?
Present.
Ms. Swope?
Here.
Mr. Boncori?
Here.
And then, Mr. Capabianco?
Here. President Boncori, welcome. Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, sir. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. President Boncori, I just want to say we're so excited to have you on the committee. We look forward to working with you for the last two years.
I'm very excited to be here as well.
Do we have any new business? Tess?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment? No public comment. Moving on with new business?
Mr. Chairman, would you sit? Um, I need a amount of order, please, if you could.
Yeah, they-
The vote to ratify the agreement between the Winterup School Committee and the Winterup Teachers Association, please.
For motion by Mr. Martucci, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Ms. Swope. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes. Um, I would like to give a brief summary of what's involved with this, the changes that we made. First off, it is important to note that this is a six percent over- increase over three years. The first year will be one point-
Two-five?
Two-five. Two-point-two-five in the second year and two-point-seven-five in the final year.
Two-point-five.
I'm sorry, two-point-five-zero in the third year. Um, the- there are a number of changes in the teacher evaluation that everybody agreed to. It's mostly an update and cleaning up updates. There is a new committee between the union and the administration that will consider the schedules for the teachers. This was at, uh, to solve a dispute or disagreement about when teachers should start and end. They were hoping that they would be able to all start at the same time, and at the same time, we felt that that was unreasonable, given the traffic situation and given the school schedules, but we are willing to, uh, consider the schedules and look at options and possibilities. So that committee will be meeting and discussing the schedules. We also, um, reached an agreement with them on their, the time that they, the common planning time. Currently, they have five common planning time days that are directed by the principal. They had wanted to have more input in how that time is spent, and so we've agreed with them to do, they will have one day of planning that is on their own, that they can do, meet with each other, do whatever they need to do, and then the other four days, they will continue to meet at, um, as a full grade level, common planning time directed by the principal. And that is primarily affecting the elementary schools, because that's the, the place at which they had a difference.
One additional thing, I think, if it's, uh, if there is a, a half day on Friday, then they will keep their-
Yeah. The, the way that the agreement is going to be written is they will have that regardless of what happens with the schedule. So it's not just if it's a half day, but if it's a, if there's some reason, if there's a professional development day or something, that they would not get that time on Friday, they will have that time on, on Thursday. Um, the compensation for the reimbursement, I guess, would be for the daycare will be, preschool will be phased out at the end of this contract. We in- did a slight increase in the amount of money that we put in, in an education fund to support their, um, their advanced degrees and their classrooms and courses that they need to take. And then we also asked them to agree to tell us sooner when they are going to move up to a next step, when they've passed classes, so that we can do better on budget planning.
Any further questions or comments about the contract?
Mr. Perrin? I just wanted to see if Paul Hottnet's approved this draft as written.
He has.
Yes, he has.
That's good.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the contract?
We have a motion. You can take one, I think.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Martucci. Second by Ms. Powell. All in favor, actually, I'll have Ms. Howard call the roll on this.
Ms. Swope? Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Mr. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
President Boncori?
Yes. I say I'm, I'm very glad that the school committee has kept this below two-point-five percent in the final year, uh, because that's all we can raise taxes by, so it did a good job this time.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes. That's seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and the motion is adopted. Uh, moving on, um, I'd like to make a statement. I've made the difficult decision to not seek reelection as chairman of the Winterup School Committee. First, let me say thank you to my family, friends, and colleagues for supporting me in this position over the past two years. As chair, I am proud to have led efforts to improve our full free-day kindergarten program by adding an additional section, making the fiscally responsible decision to reinvigorate our transportation program and revitalizing our Little Vikings program. Together, we took the activist approach by campaigning for a new Miller Field, and we stayed true to our word by ensuring that both Miller Field and this new beautiful school will be open to the community. We supported question three in two thousand and eighteen, and in doing so, we stood up for our L G B T Q students. And earlier this year, we passed a resolution in favor of the Students of Opportunity Act, which changed the chapter seventy formula. We worked within our budget to approve two contracts with salary increases, without layoffs, without a Proposition Two-and-a-half override or raising user fees. I remain an active school committee member and fight to defend the right of each child to live to their fullest potential and that each staff member has a right to work in a safe, happy, and healthy learning environment. I am proud of the work that this committee has accomplished during my time as a school committee member thus far. From my very first meeting, when we surplus the middle school back to the town to help revitalize our center business district, to when we saved our tennis courts, or to when we stood with union members to save our E S P positions at the Goldman Ford Bank School, and finally today, when we finalized a new contract for our teachers, we have done our best to live up to the trust, to live up to the trust put in us by our community. Lastly, I would like to thank my colleagues on the school committee, Superintendent Howard and Masero, for the opportunity to serve as your chair for the past two years, and I promise to be a resource for the new chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Turning that, I'll hand the gavel over to Ms. Howard for the election for a new chair.
This could be powerful. I feel like my father. So at this point, um, I would like to hear if there are any nominations for, uh, chairman for the school committee.
I nominate Brian Perrin.
And at this point, I'd like to ask again if there are any additional nominations for chairperson?
I nominate Jen Powell.
So nomination now for, um, Brian Perrin, a nomination for Jen Powell. Is there a third nomination? Hearing none. Like to, I need a second, right?
I would think we need a second and, and ask if they're accepting, I think.
Correct?
Second on both.
Need a second on both nominations.
So beginning with the first nomination to be heard from, uh, Mr. Brian Perrin, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Boncori. Uh, for the nomination of Ms. Jen Powell, for chairperson of the school committee, chairman of the school committee, uh, do I have a second?
I'll second for Jen.
Second by Mr. Fabiano. So clearly, this is not my forte. So the next step would be to go back to, uh, the first nomination and take a vote. And it'll be a roll call vote for the first nom- for nomination for, uh, Mr. Brian Perrin, the chairman of the school committee. We'd like to do a roll call vote. Um, I will start with Ms. Swope. Am I doing this correctly?
No, I think you just have each person state who they vote for and keep a tally.
Correct?
Do we need to accept the nomination?
Do you need to accept the nomination?
I think at first you'd ask them if they accept the nominations.
Clearly, this is not my forte.
And then if they both accept it-
Yes.
Then you would call each person, and they would vote either Swope, I mean, either Jen or Brian.
Yeah, I got it. I'm taking notes. Mr. Uh, so, Mr. Perrin, do you accept the nomination for chairperson of the school committee?
I do.
Hearing yes, I will move to Ms. Powell. Ms. Powell, do you accept the nomination for chairperson of the school committee?
I'm going to respectfully decline at this point.
In that case, I make the motion, we close the nominations and we cast one ballot for Mr. Perrin to be the chairman of the school committee to save some time.
I'll second that.
Second by past chairperson Capabianco. And, um, any discussion? Okay, move to a roll call vote for the nomination of Brian Perrin to be the chairperson of the school committee.
No, you don't have, because there's one ballot.
You just cast one ballot.
Oh, one ballot.
Yeah, that was the motion, to cast one vote.
So now it's vice chair.
So now we move on to the vice chair. So vice chair, uh, for the school committee is now on the table.
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Powell.
Second.
Are there any other nominations to be heard?
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
Hearing a second. All those in favor of Jen Powell as the vice chair for the Winterup School Committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it unanimous. I got much better at that as we move through that process.
You went out of a science, didn't you?
I've never had that, uh, assignment, but I am going to do this. Pass that gavel back now to Mr. Perrin. And congratulations to both. Uh, I am comfortable, I would like to make a statement that I am comfortable working with everyone on this school committee. It has been a pleasure working with Mr. Capabianco as the chair, um, and I look forward to the continuation of working with this committee. It makes my job, uh, some days difficult, but most days a pleasure and easy. Uh, and communication is, uh, really solid between all the folks here on this committee. So that is very helpful in terms of staying on the same page and moving forward. So thank you for that. Um, and thanks for allowing me to, to hold the gavel and do that vote. Mr. Perrin?
Okay. Next up, delegates and visitors, do we have any?
Seeing none. All the boy, our Boy Scouts, um, are visiting during their service badge. Which badge you guys doing today? Communication?
Communication's a marred badge.
You just saw how not to do it. So take some notes. You saw the need to practice. So you're catching up on some of your hours. Pleasure to have you guys. They've been here before. Is the last badge you were working on, same, was it the same? Still doing your hours? Citizenship in the community was the last time, um, they were here. All right, thanks. Thanks for coming.
Okay, minutes from the December sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting, can I get a, uh, motion?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Note my abstention because I was not on the committee.
Yes. Okay, financial and business, uh, procedures warrant S V W two-zero dash eleven, the amount of two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, two-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and four cents. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes. Payroll warrant, S P W two-zero dash one-two, in the amount of seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, fourteen dollars and twenty-six cents. And S P W two-zero dash one-three, the amount of seventy-two thousand, five-hundred-and-seve- no, excuse me, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and forty-seven cents.
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstention?
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay, vote to accept the five-hundred-dollar donation to life skills class from Winterup Charities. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Yeah.
Can I make a motion?
James has a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Uh, and a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, buildings and grounds. We're not, can I get a, uh, a vote, I mean, excuse me, a, uh, motion uh, to grant the, uh, the request and to waive the rental fee?
Motion to approve.
Waive the rental fee.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. One abstention. Parks and Recreation, Character Breakfast, can I get a motion to accept?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes, all right. Subcommittee reports, I believe we had a budget committee sub, uh, sub-report today, or meeting?
Just, uh, we went over the timeline, budget timeline. Um, and, uh, we talked about, um, uh, the hiring of the, uh, school business manager position, certified school business manager. And we talked about the one-point-five million dollars that's in the school building account that, uh, we are going to, uh, end up spending. Uh, that we need a little more discussion on, but, um, we will get to that. I will, though, at this time, um, make a motion that, um, we instruct Ms. Howard to post or a make a posting, uh, or a job description, uh, for the school business manager, as that's one of the positions that the school committee approves, uh, for hire. So I would ask her to, um, develop some type of a, um, job description and then show it to us, and then would post that, I'm sure, at the next meeting or before. And then I would also ask her to do some research on the tennis courts across the street from the high school, as, um, the money that's in the school building account could be used to refurbish those tennis courts.
Going to take those as two separate motions or one?
Um, probably two separate.
Okay, can I get a second on the, uh, motion, uh, for the school business, uh, manager?
Second.
All those in favor?
In terms of that, just for discussion purposes, in terms of, um, the school business manager's position, I will reach out to Masbo. I have had some lengthy conversations around, uh, job descriptions with them, and I will put together an appropriate job description for the school committee's approval prior to posting, uh, that position. And so there will be feedback from them, as well as a review of the business manager's position that was here in the past in combination with, um, Susan Eckles' current position, and make sure that the posting is reflective of all that needs to be, including, uh, certification, um, from a Massachusetts school business manager.
And I'd ask that the, uh, second motion be worded again so we can capture it.
So I would like to instruct the superintendent to, um, I guess, get, um, R F, R F Ps or, or whatever on the, um, let's see.
Quotes?
I would instruct the superintendent to get a proposal on the renovating, uh, on the, um, tennis courts across from the high school.
Reconstruction?
Renovation.
Is that it?
Yep.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we know whether we can use that money, or do we have to find that out first?
No, we can use it.
We found that out?
Yep.
So the bond, I've, I've, I've explained a little bit earlier, um, been meeting with the town CFO and, uh, have been involved in conversations with the bond council and the town's attorney on the wording of the, uh, vote and the use of the tennis courts adjacent to the high school now. Um, the amount of time the high school uses those for activities, we use it for athletics, for our tennis team, but we also use it, um, for our gym classes. We've, we share a gym with the middle school. Uh, there are days when, uh, it's tough to fit both groups in there, and, and when it's nice out, we want to do some outside activities. So, uh, we use that, uh, portion of the street quite a bit in the tennis courts. Um, and that conversation has been had with both, uh, folks from the bond council, as well as the town's attorney. I'll further that, uh, conversation, as well as receive, um, some feedback on quotes to what it may look like, and I'll circle back around with the town manager and the CFO and report back to the committee at the next meeting on that. I think you still have to take the vote, though.
I'll second that.
Did anybody second that motion?
I might have, actually.
I think you did. Okay, having no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. I think we're up to the superintendent's, uh, report.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'll start with budget. The F Y twenty budget development is in full swing. Principals, administration, facilities director, and the athletic director are all in the process of completing the required documentation related to the budget requests, um, including, but not limited to, capital planning ideas and thoughts and needs. Um, the preparation guide was in, uh, is, is a document that I have that I can share with you electronically. It's the same guide as last year in terms of the amount of work necessary at the building levels uh, for folks to do and then report back, uh, to me, and we then put that into the full budget as we move forward, which takes several months, as you are aware. I provided you in your packet with the budget calendar, um, which is a rough calendar that gives you in information about the process and my meetings as the superintendent with building-level principals and administration, as well as, uh, future meetings with, uh, town, including the FinCom, town manager, and town CFO. Um, so chapter seventy is another item I'd like to talk about. So the preliminary, uh, the Baker-Polito administration filed the, uh, F Y twenty-one budget proposal on January twenty-second, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed has posted their preliminary assessments of chapter seventy school aid and net school spending requirements for F Y twenty-one. These are preliminary estimates, uh, subject to change, obviously, as the House and Senate deliberate the budget. The Department of Education will issue the final and the official school spending requirements as soon as the governor and legislator, legislature approve either the F Y twenty state budget or an earlier local aid resolution. I will update the school committee on what that final appropriation will be, but the preliminary figures, uh, have an increase from last year to this year in F Y, in, um, chapter seventy monies to the town of Winterup of about five, uh, fifty-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty dollars. I know folks, uh, that's about thirty dollars per student, which is, um, the average amount of money that the majority of the school districts in the Commonwealth are receiving. Larger school districts such as Fall River, Brockton, and Boston, um, are positioned to receive much more. Um, and it's based on a whole host of factors, but our community fits, uh, in, in a similar situation as Swampscott, Nahat, Stonem, and, and the like. Uh, when those numbers come out, I will update you as well, uh, on the final figure, so that you have that. And that's part of our discussions with the town as well, um, and they are well aware. And Anna Friedman has, um, kept me in the loop quite a bit and educated me quite a bit, uh, and we're in constant communication about, uh, what those monies are and the offsets with, uh, all the other ways they're managing the increase in chapter seventy and what those increases may cause and offsets to other income that we had been receiving. Soon as all of that is known, I will update the committee on that as well. In your packet, you had the N E A S N C report findings. Principal Crombie is going, I wanted you to have that packet. It's, it's forty pages of a report that was done, um, out in, back at the beginning of the school year in October. Uh, N E A S N C came out, met with our staff. Uh, we did a self-reflection report that we provided to them. They spent two days here interviewing staff, looking at our facility. They were here ten years ago. Facility looked a little bit different. Uh, they were impressed with, uh, with our building and what we have become in terms of a facility. Uh, that report is pretty thick, and I provided it to you a couple of weeks ahead of time, so that when Principal Crombie comes out to review the report with the committee as a whole, you would have had a chance, uh, to review it and perhaps have some questions that you may like answered. His plan, uh, in his report is going to be to not only go over the report, touch on the highlights, touch on the areas of needs, but also, uh, make folks aware of his action plan to address the areas of need prior to their return. They'll be returning in April of twenty-one, uh, to do their final, uh, approval, and we are confident that we will, uh, receive accreditation fully from N E A S N C at that point.
Is it helpful for us to, um, write questions to you if we have some before he comes? Is that easier for him?
I would appreciate that, and, and I'm sure Mr. Crombie would as well. Okay. Um, he can answer almost anything. He has spent so much time with N E A S N C and conversations with their staff, but having the information ahead of time, so it will ensure that he doesn't miss something- Yeah. -that you may have been looking for. So if you could get those to me, I will make sure he has those in hand. Uh, playground update. So I'm sure everybody's excited about that. I just saw Ms. Powell get all excited, so playground update. Uh, as you are aware, uh, the Athertie Cummings Playground, uh, team has been hard at work. Uh, that's Andrea O'Leary and, um, folk, other folks from the building, including the, the principal, as well as phys ed teacher, uh, physical therapist, uh, input from students who have been working on it. As you know, the, uh, playground that was there, the, the structure has been removed. There's a fence around it in preparation and planning, uh, for moving forward. We decided as a school to remove that structure and dispose of it ourselves. We did that to hopefully, uh, save ourselves on some labor costs, uh, in, in the whole project itself. Um, the team, uh, has had several meetings with Ulti Play, which is the vendor that was chosen to install the playground equipment. Uh, they've reviewed the potential, potential structures that fit our budget and are in line with the original estimates. Uh, most importantly, um, that meet the needs of the population of students at the Athertie Cummings School in the community which uses that playground. Inclusivity, um, inclusive play and accessibility, uh, remain a major priority for that playground as we choose the individual activities that are going to be available as part of the structure, so that students, uh, don't have separate places to play if they, uh, have difficulty navigating the playground itself or climbing, uh, but that the play structure, uh, is enticing for all students to play in all areas, and that it's not just a certain place. If you can't, if you're not mobile or you have some mobility, um, limitations that you have to play over here, our goal is to make it playable for any of our students. Um, that's taken some time, and we're working, uh, the folks from Ulti Play pretty hard on giving us the best prices that they can give us. I'm a sale girl, so we keep watching for the sales that are coming about, um, with the playground equipment, and they've been great, uh, in keeping us up to date on those. They've narrowed down the choice, uh, to two structures, and they're going to make a final decision this week in terms of, um, which structure it is going to be that they are going to finalize. The colors will be blue and gold, um, and that was a choice of the committee. Once we have the final design, the team will move into the ordering phase and discuss the potential installation dates, and I'll provide the community, um, and, I'm sorry, I'll provide the committee, and Ms. Grimes will provide her, uh, student community and families with copies, uh, of the direction we're headed with the, to get people excited about what is to come. This past Saturday, I attended the Chamber Event, um, and it was very well-attended uh, by many, uh, colleagues and students, as well as, uh, community members. Our students, uh, as expected, spoke eloquently, um, highlighted by them recognizing, uh, past teachers, family members, and fellow students that have been a major impact, you know, in, in their success. Um, extremely humble students that we have, as well as staff. Kathy Kostonis was the third, is our third-grade teacher. She was, um, given the Teacher Excellence in Education Award. Dave Guffey, otherwise known as Guff, our high school, high school softball coach, was, uh, Coach of the Year. Jenna Dorr, class of two thousand and twenty-one, was a Leadership Award winner. Bobby Hubert, class of two thousand and twenty-one, Youth Leadership Award. And of course, a former school committee member and former town council president, uh, Mr. Ron Vecchia, uh, was given the Town Service Award. It was a great night, um, and, and fun, uh, fun to be at and to watch our, our folks receive awards that are, uh, definitely, uh, given to the right people. Just two more, uh, small things. Been, uh, working with the town health department and CASA, we're looking, uh, Meredith Hurley was a school nurse here, so we have a relationship to begin with. Um, and we have lots of conversations about what we wish we had and what we wish, wish we could access as a small town that's accessible to other communities that, um, are similar to our community, but seem to get much more, uh, in terms of their location. We're, we're so close to Boston and, uh, oftentimes don't receive the same level of grants that, uh, other surrounding communities receive. Uh, Meredith was able to write a grant, uh, with input from me and, and assign on that we would be a collaborative partner for some additional monies from the state around stu- student safety, decision-making, uh, suicide awareness and the like. As you know, we have Sandy Hook here, uh, doing a lot of work with our students, and, uh, next, the next round with Sandy Hook is, is really focusing on a curriculum, um, suicide curriculum that we'll be embedding into our, uh, classrooms at some point. We're walking through that now. Uh, but this grant opportunity is allowing an additional, uh, licensed social worker to come to the town and work for the town for a year, uh, and provide support services to the school. And one of the biggest issues we're facing, uh, from a school district level, as well as a community level, is access to supports outside the school for students with mental health issues and social, emotional issues. Uh, the insurance companies are cutting folks off. Uh, parents' ability to access more information beyond the walls of the school has been difficult. has been difficult, our parents have given us that information, that they require more support. And so with those funds, Meredith and I felt as though the additional social worker who could liaison for those families who can't seem to navigate the system, or keep getting doors shut when they're trying to access support services outside the school, the social worker will be able to help these families navigate that system. And the communication between the school and the social worker will be supported through our school adjustment counselors, and a collaborative effort with Meredith and I, sort of leading that charge. Another piece of the grant will allow an additional collaboration, which we've had for quite some time now with CASA, Community Against Substance Abuse, to be able to run our youth risk assessment. We're gonna go with the PNA report evaluation, again, looking at students' choices and decisions, and then using that data to help continue, to guide us with our social emotional support systems that we have put in place based on the data that we had received. So it's just a nice, you know, shout out to the town for including the schools, and thinking of us, and not just hiring a social worker to take care of what they need to take care of, but understanding that our families are all one. And many of the families in the community have students here, so that collaboration is definitely an additional support to the school system that we're thankful for. And I'll report back out to you, but the PNA report is about a six thousand dollar effort, and we evaluate our students in grades eight through twelve through a survey system, and then disaggregating that data and reporting that back to the town, families, and school to help guide us. And the grant is gonna be able to fund that evaluation. We do it every three years, and this is the third year that we have been able to secure grant funding. So I'm pleased for that. And that is the end of my report.
Any personnel?
Okay. So appointments, at this point, we have none. Resignations, we have a seventh grade teacher, Mary Kate Simpson, who has taken a job in another community too far away for her to commute, because that would be Vermont. So she was sad to leave us, but she is pursuing a life dream with her family, and has decided to do so. So this, some of our postings, we have no retirements at this point, but one of our postings is reflective of Mary Kate's position. Other postings that we have are athletics, Varsity Assistant Baseball Coach, Freshman Baseball Coach, Varsity Assistant, and JV Boys Tennis, Middle School Track, two positions. All the fall athletic positions have been posted, although it sounds a little premature, we like to stay ahead of the game. And then we have long-term substitutes, many of these are for maternity leaves. We have several maternity leaves coming up. So we have a substitute math teacher, a long-term substitute ELA teacher at the middle school, grade seven ELA teacher at the middle school as well. We have no leaves of absence at this point.
Quick question on the athletic.
Yes.
That is following our practice of reposting the positions every year.
Correct. So each year, well before the season, we post the athletic positions for the coaches to reapply, because it is a seasonal position that you do have to reapply for each year.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business, second reading of advertising and schools policy. I'd like to ask for a motion to waive the second reading.
Motion to waive.
Adopt. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. The Association of Schools and Colleges, the Winter High School Accreditation, I think we covered that already, out of order, but we covered it, is there anything further on that?
No, just that Mr. Crombie will be here to address questions concerned, and give you a full breakdown of that report at the next school committee meeting.
Okay. We have a school committee representative vacancy on the Miller Field Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate President Phil Boncorrie.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I wish there's a discussion, sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to see some of this discussion.
Go ahead.
I understand that President Ron Vecchia has reached out to be on this, you've done a lot on this committee. However, for our appointment, I do believe you have to be a member of the school committee. Having said that, that's why I nominate President Boncorrie.
So all those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to oppose? Opposition? Unanimous.
Oh.
On schools committee subcommittees, I'm putting together a list of whatever changes I see fit, and I'll have that for our next meeting. Pre-K tuition increase?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table this to our next meeting, so we have more time to review on this increase.
Second.
Okay, we'll table that for our next, next meeting. Vote to approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school calendar, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Discussion?
Discussion to just inform you that this has been reviewed as necessary with the union, and with the union president, to ensure that we're following the contract. That's part of the teacher's contract, that we do review this with them. The first two days that the teachers are in session will be full day professional development, which would be two of the hundred and eighty-three days that they work. There are, this year, there are two elections, in which one of the election days, a school will be closed with no students and no teachers, and on the election, on the third, will be the third teacher professional development day in their contract. Teachers will be in, but students will not. So the last day of school without snow days, which I'm praying for, would be June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, and with the five snow days would be June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. So we have a motion, second, and a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Vote to approve the superintendent's goals, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Again, unanimous. Okay, we've already ratified the agreement with the school committee and the Teachers Union. Unfinished business, textbook material discard request?
So just to speak on that, we're still adding to that list, so I prefer to hold off and move that to a future meeting, once we have the list complete.
Motion to table.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's tabled. Okay, unfinished, excuse me, public comment, do we have any public comment tonight? Seeing none, moving on to public relations. The Swope, nothing? Mr. Matucci? Mr. Fabiano? Okay, I just wanna say that I attended the Winter Police Association Fight Department Charity Game, basketball game, this weekend. It was well attended, it was a great cause, they did a lot of great work. Anthony Sorrentino and the Winter Police Department and the Winter Fight Department did a wonderful job of putting it together and raising funds to fight cancer, so I just wanna tell them, great job.
I'd like to second with Vice, with Chairman Perrin said I attended that, that event along with President Vecchia, and thanks to the Winter Police and Winter Fire for being involved with that. As well as another congratulations to our students and community members who received the Chamber comments a lot this weekend.
Thanks for calling me President Vecchia.
Oh, it's the first meeting.
That, that was a, a great basketball, and they had raised well over six thousand dollars before the start of the game, so they raised at least another thousand during the game.
Yeah, I would like to wish our drama students well, they're doing dinner theater up at the Prince Pasta this week. That money goes to support their scholarship fund, I think tickets are sold out, but I know they're gonna have a great show.
Awesome. And if I can just add one piece, because I can't get away from my former career, and to throw out some information regarding a workshop run by the CPAC this week, on Wednesday, at six-thirty at the Winthrop Middle School Conference Room, Understanding the Basic Rights of a Student Navigating an IEP. So it's a parent workshop, where you don't have to be the parent of a student with special needs. If you just have questions or thoughts, or you wanna understand how an IEP is written, an Individualized Education Plan for a Student with Special Needs, the CPAC is having someone from the Federation of Children come out and give parents some information. So if you are interested, again, it's at twenty-eight at six-thirty at the Winthrop Middle School Conference Room. And no RSVP is, is required.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned.